Um. All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Vander Board of Finance meeting, regular scheduled meeting, Wednesday, May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two. So we'll go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you. All right, the first order of business on the agenda is the public speak. You know, it doesn't look like we have anybody from the public on. So if we concur, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item three, which is additions and deletions of the agenda items. Does anybody have any proposed deletion additions or deletions? Yeah, Joanne.
Not anything major, but do we need to discuss? I didn't see on here. I knew we were going to talk about redoing one of the minutes, maybe. And I think we didn't approve like the the minutes of the twentieth because it was short. That's they're posted, so I don't know what that means, whether we approve them or not. They're they're on the website. So it's something we can circle back to.
No, I think that's a good point. If we didn't approve it, and frankly, I'd forgotten about that. If we didn't approve the meeting minutes, that was for April twentieth, right? Or, yeah.
I believe so. Yeah.
Then I think that we should add that as an agenda item, probably under nine C, which is just to add on to the approval of meeting minutes. Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Okay, so Joanne is, go ahead.
I thought you were talking. I make the motion that we discuss the April twentieth meeting minutes to see if they've been completed or updated.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, I think Diane first. Diane, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, I say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any absentions? Okay, we'll go ahead and add that as agenda item nine C, which is the I believe it's Wednesday, April twentieth, meeting minutes. Okay, thank you. Any other additions or deletions of agenda items? Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is the town administrator's report. Eric, you have the floor. You're muted, Eric.
I should have that by now. I'm just gonna go over a couple of things that are pertinent to the Board of Finance. The assessor's office, the Board of Selectmen made a decision at their last meeting to purchase an additional server license and use a local copy of that as opposed to a cloud-based service. That cost has increased. It'll basically be a fifty seven hundred dollar bill to buy the server license. But that's a kind of a Microsoft, I don't want to say stupidity, but racket. Because they price them by the number of cores of the server. So because we have a sixteen-core server, it's considerably more expensive. And they only sell them in two packs, so you can't get an individual license. But the good news is there've been a few other things where we would have probably installed the an extra quote-unquote server on the server if we had the ability. So you know, it is what it is. The intention from the Board of Selectmen is to take that money from the the revow fund because it's for the assessor's office. And that basically what it is, is it allows them to continue using Vision appraisal. Vision allowed us to use their cloud-based version while we were going through the appraisal process because it's faster and easier for them to make changes when they control the location of the software and the data. But now that that's up, they either want us to pay, you know, twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred dollars a year or install it locally. So, you know, it's basically a, you know, a two-year payoff to install it locally. And it gives us one additional server license for future expansion. We're getting ready to get in a really busy point for issue transfer station stickers, so I would imagine that we're gonna probably issue ten thousand or twelve thousand dollars with the transfer station stickers in the next month. So that's going to be ongoing. I also sent the notice to all boards, commissions, and employees that they have until June third to make any significant purchases that they need out of their budget. And if not, if they think they're not gonna be able to do that by that timeframe, then they need to let me know so that we can hopefully get the bills back sooner and not carry that on as far as we did last year, because that was kind of annoying. We were still chasing down stuff in September of last. Building Department, the the point in pay is up and running, so that's been working fairly seamlessly because it allows us to take payment for building department stuff. And we've successfully transitioned the wetlands and the wetlands agency and most of the stuff for the zoning department over to permit link. So we're able to do pretty much everything online, which allows us two things. One, a lot better accountability. And two, it just goes a lot faster for the customer. And because the customer pays all the fees for the use of permit link and pays the fees for the financial processing, if they choose to do that, it's basically cost neutral to the town. The other thing that's, one of the things that's been a little unfortunate, the towns engineer, Brandon Handfield, has basically decided to drop all his municipal clients. Frankly, he had, he had been trying to hire one or two people to staff up his office. And he just can't hire enough people, so he's basically said he's not going to do any more municipal work, which puts us in a little bit of a bind. We put out an RFQ for engineering services. And we should have that back to look at sometime by mid-June. Unfortunately, that's a little bit of a delay because Brandon was supposed to be giving me a completed RFP for culvert design for one of our culverts. So there's a little bit of a delay in that. We also have an RFP out for reclamation and repaving of a portion of Long Hill Road and Shoddy Mill Road. The RFP went out last week, maybe Thursday. And we have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow for that. I'm nervous about that because when we, when we originally got the steep grant to do that was almost two years ago at this point. And I'm concerned that the cost basis for doing the work has increased, you know, compared to when we we bid it out. Since we're only getting, it's not like we can go back to steep and get more money. We just at this point have to wait and see what the bids are and then figure out how to proceed from there. So that's in the works. Also, the pavement shimming on the north side of town will be starting next week. That was delayed from midweek this week to Monday of next week. They're just late finishing up another previous job. The next thing up, we're about to order more fuel for Public Works, the big Public Works tank. We're only gonna order about seven hundred and fifty gallons because I think that will run us through to the end of the year. Because we have basically used, we have three gallons left of our eleven thousand five hundred dollar allotment that we're getting at a dollar seventy-eight, and the rest we're gonna be paying market rate for. So I'm trying to absolutely minimize our fuel usage. And then we're also trying to figure out which of the groups because Public Works uses fuel, Fire Department uses fuel, the school uses fuel, and senior transportation uses fuel. So we gotta kind of see and divvy up the responsibility for that fairly, you know, for the costs. Transfer station, we are gonna switch vendors for our textile recycling to a company called CMRK. It's not gonna be a big cost difference. It should net us around an extra five hundred dollars a year in recycling money back to the town. So not a ton, but it's better than nothing. We also put ourselves on both the state bid list and also the croc bid list. State bid list for untreated salt or crop bid list for treated salt. So we don't know what the bids are, but basically what happens is everybody wants to be part of the bid process has to agree and sign ahead of time that they want to be part, and then so they know how much they're contracting. And it's, these are variable bids. You have to give them a minimum number of tons you're gonna use. And then you can usually order two to three times that, up to two to three times that. So we're doing the same thing like we did last year to save money. We're allowing ourselves to buy both treated salt and untreated salt. So we'll use the untreated stuff earlier in the year when it's warmer and save the treated salt for when it's colder. You know, and we've got more icing conditions.
It's just a lower freezing temperature salt, just it's got added as to lower the free temperature.
Yeah, basically what it is, is it's, you know, most of it is sodium chloride, that's regular rock salt. And then they add magnesium chloride to it, which has a much lower bigger freezing point depression.
Yeah, so it's a mix. Okay.
Magnesium, okay. Yeah, so Bunker Hill Bridge, that's still slated for spring of two thousand and twenty-four, which is good because even with this budget, we're not gonna have enough money to pay for it, so it would be this budget plus some of that last budget. Da-da-da-da. You know, we have the steep grant to pay for part of the reclamation and repaving roadwork. But, you know, until we get the bids back, we're not gonna know how much that's covered. I mean, so far, most of the bids that have come back, there's not a big jump in labor costs from last year to this year, but there is a big caught jump in materials cost. And asphalt tracks with petroleum, so it's, you know, it's going to be somewhat difficult. The connectivity grant project, the contractor's about eighty percent done with the work he needs to do. We're hoping that one of their subs will be in and doing the fence that will run along Center Street and find the parking lot. After that, they have to put down, they have to pave the final pavement course on that and then put up signage, install some benches and some other stuff. The contractor's still waiting them them to finish fabricating the railing, the final railing for the library. But that should be, hopefully, everything will be complete in the next three weeks or so, pending any, you know, supplier delays, which these days are, you know, it's, it's just hard to, hard to account for. I'm still trying to figure out how to implement, so the Board of Selectmen asked me to look into what it would cost to have panic buttons installed in the town wall. They've ruled out all the easy ways of doing it because our existing alarm system in the building's not compatible with that, so we can't just run it through our fire alarm panel. And we can't go directly to the police barracks because they don't allow automatic notifications. And we can't go to Talon Dispatch. So to do it, we would have to use a commercial alarm service. I'm still trying to figure out what that's gonna be. I don't know whether the Board of Selectmen's gonna wanna actually do it or not. I just don't know. Some of you know, I know Joanne went to the presentation for the Affordable Housing Grant. If you haven't, it's probably worth reviewing the the video for that because I think that is ultimately gonna be one of the issues that the town's gonna need to wrap their heads around. If for no other reason than the state continues to come out with more regulations. And I think at some point, if if we're not proactive with it, the state's gonna force us to do something about it.
Is that, is that posted on the YouTube channel or so it could be there, you know?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it is on the YouTube channel.
I haven't looked recently, but you had mentioned it was positive. Joanne talked about it. Okay, thanks.
It's really eye-opening to something that I thought wasn't even gonna be an issue, and I learned so much. And he has a lot of data there, so it is good. Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yep. Um, and let's see. That's pretty much all I want to talk about unless you guys have specific questions to me related to stuff other than finance, which obviously we've covered.
Anybody have any questions for Eric?
A real quick one, small one. Eric, with the town engineer situation, do we, in addition to the delay, would you anticipate, you know, rates being higher, or would you think that's not the issue?
I, you know, we have tried in the past to stick to very small firms because we tend to do, their hourly rate tends to be better. You know, there's no question if you, if I look at the firms that are bidding, at least a couple of them are gonna be definitely more expensive hourly than what we've been paying now. On the other hand, one of the advantages to a bigger firm is that several of the ones that I think we're gonna get bids for do a lot of bridge design and culvert design work. So we stand the potential of being able to do a lot of that kind of in-house with our town engineer as opposed to putting out, have the town engineer, you know, just supervise and then put out a secondary RFP for that, those individual projects. So pluses and minuses, but my suspicion is it's gonna get more expensive. In truth, we haven't come close to spending our whole town engineering budget. And part of that is just frankly, you know, they're so busy getting them to do the work for us has been the rate-limiting step, not having the funds to do it. So I think we'll be okay. But, you know, we'll have to see what what the, you know, RFQ comes back and what proposals we get.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yep.
Other questions for Eric?
I have one. Eric, why are we looking into panic buttons for the town hall?
Because several employees feel unsafe working here.
Oh, is that anything to do with yesterday?
No, several employees have been complaining about that for years. I just, I personally haven't considered it a high enough priority to spend money, but the Board of Selectmen have asked me to figure it out and at least get prices for it. So I am doing that. I don't know whether they will choose to execute that. You know, I can say that if you look at it statistically, the numbers of workplace violent events that occur in town halls are fairly minimal. But it's not zero, you know, and we definitely have employees working here alone, you know, on a not super infrequent basis.
Right. Are the cameras at all?
There are cameras in the building.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Joanne, you have a question?
I was just gonna add, I wonder with the, we happen to have one at our school, and there's a button under one of the main office secretary's desks. Once in a while, it gets tripped off by mistake. I just wonder for the town hall with being the Fire Department being right there, and maybe I I just wonder how quick they could be summoned even with a panic button, you know, so I wonder if it's and I mean, it's worth looking into, like you said. I just know that we don't have a police force, right, in town? And are you thinking it would be tripped up? I I heard the things you said. I just wonder.
So.
Because I work alone a lot too, and it is scary if you turn around and then someone's just there or something, or someone gained entry to the building. So you have to kind of give that calm demeanor that, oh, I'm fine, but I could go lock myself in the closet if I need to. So I, yeah. Staff training too for something like that would be helpful, maybe.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, I'm, like I said, it's not something that and and maybe it's a fault on me because I I've kind of ignored the request for a couple of years. But since they made it to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen has asked me to do it. You know, I, I mean, I just look at it statistically and I say that the likelihood of it happening, I mean, statistically speaking, there's more chance of the building catching on fire, you know, and somebody being killed that way than of getting killed in an actual violent encounter. But I understand that that some people are very nervous about working alone and being in the building. So, you know, there's, there's peace of mind in having some sort of backup system. So that's where I'm at.
Additional questions for Eric? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to agenda item five, which is the Finance Department report, town budget summary. Are we gonna go through these, Eric, or Marina?
Sure. Marina, you wanna lead this one?
Sure, let me just pull it up here. So is it easier to look at the Excel sheet I sent earlier or through the packet?
I don't think we had the packet. Did we ever get a packet?
Yeah, I thought Amanda sent it. Or maybe not, I'm not sure.
Yours more up-to-date, Marina, maybe?
Oh, okay. Fine, mine me.
Do you want me to let you share your screen?
Yeah. It's telling me my internet connection is unstable. I don't know why.
We haven't had one of those in a while. I do remember that happening occasionally, though. I I don't recall it ever actually be making for a huge problem, though.
I don't know, it's not even opening. Okay.
If you want, I can share. Do you wanna share the Excel version, April expenses Excel? Okay, can you all see that?
Yeah.
Okay, of course now mine opens.
Do you want me to allow you to share yours and you drive it then?
Okay.
This one doesn't have department percent use totals on it. So I thought Marina's had it on there.
If you want that, then hang on. We can go back to the version share. My problem is always I've got too many windows open at one time. Is that the one you want from the report? I don't know, that doesn't have the totals either.
Oh, that one doesn't match the one that Marina sent out.
Marina, I'll let you share. How about that?
Okay. Yeah, it does. No, it probably does. Okay, let me know if you can see.
Yeah, bring it up.
Okay. So do we, is there any outstanding questions that anyone wants to look at or any numbers? I don't know. Diane, if you had anything you wanted to look at?
I just have a general question. I noticed in some of the current expended columns, there were some negative numbers. Is that just representative of some? I know you guys were doing some corrections and moving things around. Is that just a a function of?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna look this, this one specifically for the example. So the contract of software maintenance, so that was remember back, we had the issue with the service, the tax club or uses, a pretty big refund of stuff that was overpaid, so that went back into that line.
All right, so those big negative numbers are just the corrections that you guys made. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any more, but I knew, I knew that one would stick out, so I was like, let's come up with it.
I have just one other question. Line two forty-four. COVID expenses.
Two forty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Forty-four, COVID expenses, okay. That's always been there, right?
Yeah, so that, we, I made that account. I think Eric and I did it back, I want to say the end of two thousand and twenty, when we had gotten some money in COVID, you know, if we had any bills to come out of it. So this twelve oh six, I believe, was our share that we paid to a COVID vaccine clinic to.
But it's a negative number, so why would a positive number if we paid out?
There was no money in that, nothing put in that account. So if I paid out of it, it would just be negative.
Okay.
So I think I can answer that, Diane, and that is that we had originally that money ended up getting out of the ARP grant.
Yeah, we transferred it after it got set up.
We transferred it out of that because it was supposed to have been taken out of that grant by the Board of Selectmen. So basically, we had a request from the Health Department to backfill them through the ARP grant for a certain amount per town, which was their excess costs for putting on the vaccine clinics. Basically, they had to pay back the town of Mansfield for money that Mansfield loaned them to make the, you know, to do the program. So the Board of Selectmen agreed. It was originally taken out of this line, which had been carried over from the previous year. And then when we realized it was taken from there incorrectly, we backed that money back out, which is why there was a zero budget.
Yeah, so we paid for this twelve hundred dollars with the ARP grant because I I remember that. That's where they wanted the money to come. And this is just the correction because you took it out of here in error?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Well, not in error. Error, just at the time we got this bill. So I said, we'll pay it from here and then correct it when the ARP one was set up.
But it's not an expense we're gonna have on our expenses. We paid it out of the ARP funds.
Right, right.
Right, okay, so, all right. And then there's a question, line two sixty-two, a little bit farther down, transfer station permits. What is that? Are those refunds?
So uh, no, transfer station permits are costs that we expend, so we pay you know, the state for permits for the transfer station. And we had a little thing where we yes, so I'm pretty sure those are just straight transfer station permit fees paid to this.
Just got the bill, just got the bill for next fiscal year for it, so that line is where we'll pay it from.
But we never had a budgeted. But we never had a budgeted, an adopted budget for that line?
Eric, was this the one, I think we were taking it from a different account and we agreed to create a separate account for that permit.
Correct. Going, going back a bunch of years, Barbara was just taking that from like haul-in fees or one of the other transfer station line items. And when we realized that, we realized we were paying this annual fee and we didn't have a line item. We created one for it. And then charged against it this year, so at least it shows up as what it was for.
Just trying to separate it out.
Okay. I understand that. So then my next question is, because we created this new account, did we include? Did we budget for this in the new budget? Because I can't remember.
I think you did, Eric. I think we, you added whatever one, so we created.
I just want to make sure, if we create another account, we have it.
Guys, want me to pull up the spreadsheet and have a look at it?
Budget.
Please. Uh, I'll see if I can, the spreadsheet I had up last night at the meeting, I'll see if I can pull that back up and have a look at it.
I just want to make sure we covered that, so we don't have another account with no adopted money.
The same with the mid near rock fees, a couple down line two sixty-nine. We are taking that, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, also from tipping fees, so for those.
Yeah, but we have a budgeted amount, so we're managing it.
So.
Correct.
Those are my only two questions.
Okay. And I made sure to take the grants out this.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I found a line on the spreadsheet under recycling tab. One dash one hundred dash oh seven dash oh seven oh three dash eight oh seven permits. And the approved request was for nine hundred seventy dollars, so a little lower than the eleven fifty-two.
But at least we have a number in there, that's great.
Yeah, the invoice I just got for next fiscal year was eight hundred even, so.
Oh, okay, because that, and actually, interestingly enough, apparently that, that's what we spent in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, was eight hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So I don't know what happened in twenty twenty-one, but it seems to be eight hundred is normal, based on the spreadsheet.
Let's, let's take a look at it and see whether, I mean, it's also possible we took one of the mid near rock payments out of.
From that, yeah.
That would be my guess. So let's review that one tomorrow.
Yeah, but the core question is, was it budgeted? And the answer is yes.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
No problem.
Other questions for Marina on this? Okay, thanks Marina.
Screen.
What else do you want to look at here?
Trying to go back to I think there's a, is there a revenue?
Yep, revenue would be our next item on the.
Okay. I don't know if I have it in a file, might just be on here. So I know Sherry was working on updating the interest on taxes because we had an issue with the file that we share between us and the Task Collector's Office. Eileen had all the information she put in, but when Sherry tried to open it from our office, all the information was gone. So David was able to get that back for her, and I believe Sherry's up through March or April, I want to say she's got posted in here.
So when are we going to get the rest posted?
In all of April. Yep.
Are we through April, or is this?
Um, let me see, I'll leave me the date on the report. She printed this he, Monday, so. So yeah, it was for four one through, through four thirty, so for the whole month.
So we have all the revenue booked on this report that we've received through April thirtieth.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the taxes she did up through April, but I know she did, perhaps for revenue we get from the state, I posted as well.
So are you saying there could be some revenue items that haven't been posted on this yet?
Potentially the April taxes, I would just have to double check with her.
There's only four hundred and eighteen thousand left to collect, so it looks like most of it.
Most of it, yeah.
Posted.
Yeah, April is the collection month, so yeah, that was a big month those. Yeah, this was the current revenue, the one point five.
Four eighteen should be the stragglers, the people who are paying late.
Yeah. That's me. All right, let's see. And Eric said we'll start getting more transfer station permit fees. We got the last chunk of the ECS, so now I posted that. Um, let's see.
What about this municipal revenue sharing, you know, we're in the hole seventeen thousand dollars, does that come in later in the year, or are we not getting any more money?
Was this the one, I think you had talked about it before Diane and Eric said we're no longer, is this the one we're no longer getting?
Yeah, I don't think we're getting that.
Okay, yeah.
I would budget it for it last year, so we budgeted something we didn't get?
We got one payment, that three thousand one seventy-nine, and that was it, that's all I've seen come through for it.
Right. But that's not crazy uncommon with the state to tell us they're going to get, get something and then us not actually get it. I mean, we tend to get the big ones, the ECS. But some of the smaller funds, like there's one that's, you know, three to five thousand dollars a year that's supposed to be spent on something related to, to road work. The municipal grants and aid one. I mean, it's not every year that we get that. You know, and when we do get it, it's fairly late in the year. We are still expecting a bunch of payments for the senior transportation. For some reason, they seem to be holding on and wanting to pay all three quarters at once. So we should be getting somewhere around nine thousand dollars back from that, from the state. And we've got another uh, three to four thousand that should be coming in for the neglected cemeteries grant that was put in for.
But I submitted the paperwork for the affordable housing grant also.
Right. Yeah, no idea when we'll actually get that money from the state that has been submitted.
All right, so that's good. Building Department too, we're starting, like Eric said, we're starting to get the money from point and pay electronically, so I'll be posting that as we get more of that in.
In the next couple of months are when we get a lot of our revenue in from the Building Department. So I would expect to see, you know, uh, twenty to thirty, an extra twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Believe it or not, by the end of the year, if, if normal trends.
In addition to what you're showing now?
Yeah, because this is when a lot of, lot of things start to hit. You know, most major construction projects, you know, are, are being permitted right now for, for some, the summer construction season.
I did a couple of weeks ago, so that'll hit that also at the end of the month when I post them.
Joanne, you have a question?
Yeah, I think one of the questions I had, I was surprised in that affordability housing thing, I think last year, maybe there was only three new homes built in town, which makes sense. I mean, I know there's not a lot of available land. So the Building Department fees must come from a lot of renovations or additions or house improvements and things, is that, okay?
Yeah, correct.
I know, you know, my, my hobby, when I go in and, and look at the stuff in the assessor's office, I'll ask, oh, how many houses? She didn't really know how many were built, you know, per year on an average, but he did dig up that information, so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's not a lot of new construction in the town.
Right.
Um, as of around two thousand and eight, when we had the big housing slump, uh, the town of Andover had about thirty-five uh, or so building lots that were ready to go. But pretty much all of them have been built on at this point. And I don't, I can't recall when the last time we actually had a subdivision application in the town. But it's been three to four years since we've even had a subdivision application, so.
Okay, thanks.
Additional questions from Marina on the revenue report? Okay, do we have anything on town aid road spending?
We're on check register or. Not that's about it.
So Marina, can you pull up the, because the town aid road should be on the one Excel spreadsheet you sent to the board today? Because that's.
I just had, I only have the two expenditure ones.
Okay. Um, if the board wants to review those, I can pull those up and share my screen if you want to review those.
I'm okay without it.
Oh.
We can, we can review it if anybody wants to see them.
I, it, it gives the, the summary of the whole year, Eric, is that what it is? Kind of just like a breakdown?
Yes, so the, the board had asked a couple of months ago for a list essentially of all the funds, kind of the permanent funds and what the expenditures out of them were. So we provided that to the board in one big Excel spreadsheet that's broken down by fund. So you should have had that today, and it's the same one we gave the Board of Selectmen uh, earlier this month.
In a late, did we get it late today? I, which is fine, I mean.
Eric sent it out, Eric sent it out on an email like just before lunchtime today, I think.
Yeah.
Might be in here, I'm looking.
Um, question on this report, Eric, are you going to put the community center fund on here?
On which? Oh, on that spreadsheet?
Yeah, because it's not on here.
But we're, we're not actually spending anything out of it so far, so.
Well, we've spent, we've paid for the engineers. Right?
Not out of the air, well, yes, out of the yeah.
Yes, so we should have expenses against that fund now.
Which one did you say, Diane?
The Community Center Fund. We should have the, the site design engineer fees coming out of that.
Is that the, is, are they the MPN? Is that who they are, Eric?
The SC, there's two. Yeah, and NPM, I think.
Let me just take a quick look. Yeah, we don't have that one on that list. So Marina, can you make a note to just add that one to that list?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think I started a tab for it in Excel, I was just waiting to add to it.
Oh, is this correct, Eric? I'm looking at the Road Improvement Fund tab. And the last transaction on there is from November of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's probably correct. Because we haven't done anything, because we're not paying for the culverts out of that. In our next big, so Abby's contracting will be in as of next week. So we'll be starting to get bills again for that.
Okay.
And remember too, because we spend money from both the Road Improvement Fund and the Town Aid Road Fund. Um, you know, it's possible there've been a few smaller things paid out of one versus the other. So it wouldn't surprise me that we haven't spent any real money out of that at this point.
And we have not combined the Town Aid Road into the Road Improvement Fund, yeah.
We have not, but I mean, I do think we should.
So so that's another fund that the Town Aid Road is not on this spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's the first one there.
Yeah, and Town Aid Road is on there.
Wait a minute.
Just scroll to the left, you'll see.
There it is, thanks for, thanks, Mark.
And thank you for opening this. Now I see, yeah, I did glance at it earlier today, just kind of wrapping my head around all the different parts of it, so. Yeah. This is good, good to see.
We're spending all our money.
So moving forward, like I, this will be great, where they'll document, you know, we'll be able to see it in lifetime or whatever, however they say, not immediately, but this will be a good tracking thing that you've started, or have you always done this for years? Like.
Uh, we have not, we have not.
I think like Diane was talking about, or when we asked for this. Um, yeah, it's just a good document to have to show how much is getting done. Thank you.
Yeah, so each time I cut checks, I'll, whatever, I'll go through and update it, so.
Okay, further questions or comments on those? Okay, I guess that would take us to the over expenditure report.
Okay, and I don't know how you want to look at this, there's two. So you had asked me last month, you didn't really like my format, and you asked me to mirror last year's format. So that was one of the things, and I supplied this to the Board of Selectmen at their meeting last month, and then I copied you today. I apologize, that did not get the packet, that was that was supposed to be in the packet. So we can either look at the list of budget transfers, that's the file that's called Budget Transfers Board of Finance NP five ten twenty twenty-two. Or if you want to look at it first, there's also something that that we did, a sheet we've started to include, which is expenditures by percentage, so you can look at it at a glance and see what's over and what's under. Because, which is what I've kind of been using to figure out, you know, what things I need to address. So if, if either of those, you want to review either of those, you know.
Well, are you going to be asking us for approval to move to do budget transfers?
Yes.
I guess we should look at the budget transfer one.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fairly concise, it's probably, that makes sense for us to look at it.
Okay. Let me, uh, share screen and. Okay, so I'm assuming you're seeing that now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So those are what we're suggesting for the first round of, it, it's obviously not going to take care of everything. But those were the, the ones I felt like, at that point, we knew enough to know what we were spending and what we weren't. So those were the recommendations I made for the first tranche of transfers.
So I have one general question um, for you on this to answer. Some of these amounts you're requesting to transfer funds in, but it does not satisfy the full deficit in that account line. Why is that?
Well, because we don't necessarily, I'm transferring it into, from an account that I'm wiping out. And I'm not going to run another account negative to, to make one account even. So I'm just, I'm trying on most of these to make the easy transfers. And once we do this, and once we get a new printout which shows all the deficits, as we get further along in the budget process, we can shore up the remainder in those missing. in those missing accounts. And a number of these accounts, like, I don't know what the final number is, for instance, for senior transportation fuel or senior transportation, so I know I'm already over. And so we tried to partially shore up the account, but we know once we've gotten through the whole year, and we know exactly how many hours of usage we're going to use, then we'll need to transfer an additional one. So basically, I'm, I'm doing the easiest transfers, the ones I know the money's available right now that were unlikely to expend before the end of the year.
Okay, so let me rephrase that to make sure I understand. For example, this first group of items here is, the deficit is the board clerk, board of selectmen.
Correct.
Want to take money from the Veterans Day Committee and the dues membership from the tax collector, collector for a total of two twenty-four sixty-three and credit the board clerk account. But that balance in that account is a negative five hundred and eight dollars, so two twenty-four is not going to satisfy that.
That's correct.
Oh, there's a lot of accounts that are like that, so.
That is correct. But what I'm saying is, we're not far enough along for me to know exactly where I can take enough money. I don't want to take money out of accounts now until I know what's going to be fully expended from those accounts. So right now, I'm just taking the money that I know, like, I know Veterans Day's been over for a long time. We're not spending any more money out of that, so there's no reason to leave money in that account at this point. You know, and I know the tax collector's paid all her, her dues for the organization she belongs to. So we know that money's available, for instance. So that's all I'm trying to do, I'm trying to take the, the easy, safe transfers I know I can take now to shore up the accounts and get them as close to shore up as I can.
This next group to offset the legal and professional for plant, planning and zoning. As of the latest report that we have in this packet, the negative balance in that three-ten account, legal, professional, planning and zoning is five thousand eighty-seven dollars, why would we credit more than what the negative is?
Because they just had Mark Brants at a, a planning meeting. Um, and I know they ran at least another thousand bucks in expenses um on legal advice, so I know we're going to have further bills from that, we just haven't got yet.
I got one yesterday for two thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Yeah.
That's, that'll come out of there too.
Well, this is kind of why I'm confused, because last year when we did this, we basically made transfers to offset the negative balances and accounts, and they were all right on the money, so now this one is totally different. And it seems like and I don't know what the right way to do it is, e- either you get everything, all the numbers, and you do it all in one fell swoop. Or you do this nitpick stuff at it, but then it's like a moving target, we're always trying to look at it, we're going to have to look at this every month then. To make sure.
I mean, the unfortunate reality is, you're not going to have everything until end of August, sometime in September. Because there's always stuff that triples in late. So if you don't want to make any transfers, you know, part of the reason why I want to do as much of this early is because the more you clean up off the books that you don't have to worry about, the more you can figure out, you know, how much I really still owe. You know, and how close are we? I guess is how I would.
I think that's what I was going to try to intercede, but didn't want to interrupt Diane. Do you have, now that's interesting to me. Um, I know that in my place, we have like a spending deadline, and I know you talked about the beginning of June. You want to hear what everybody, you know, every department might want to spend. Is that sort of why there could be a trouble, could be trouble with all these audit? I just can't believe the audit goes so long. I know there was multiple problems or whatever, and we keep hearing, so if you, the way you're supposed to place all the orders, at least by the end of June, I mean, to to be acceptable and legal, I believe, everything would have to be a purchase order issued or an order made by June thirtieth, and then, like you said, you, then you run around, when I was in accounting and purchasing, then you run around, they make us call and try to get the bills ASAP so that we can clean everything up, and people are usually accommodating. Unless you're waiting on a late shipment, of course, you don't want to pay a bill that isn't for a good that hasn't arrived. So is it generally the beginning of June, you try to have everybody place their orders?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to accomplish.
But it, and so in going with Diane's question, as I was listening, in the past, do you think possibly it just might have went longer, or there were different guidelines set? I mean, I think maybe even by the, you're the boss and you make the rules, but seeing as how the audit is such a problem every year, and I'm just, this was my first year in. You know, so I'm going to have everything up in my head, and that's why I like to learn. But is that part of the problem? Like you said, you're chasing down invoices and bills and things well into August and September. Has that been an ongoing problem and why the audit is in so much trouble? Because I, I know you can't place everything early in the year. So I, I'm just speaking out loud, but um hopefully it goes better by having a deadline of the beginning of June and then getting orders placed and and then you see what you do actually have left over. And I'm kind of in agreement with Diane too. Just so that we have some kind of reference. I understand what you're trying to do, Eric, which is kind of stop the bleeding and get some of the counting money moved, but is it going to be a problem when we try to figure out next year, oh, how much did they overspend? Oh, well, we made this transfer in April, or we transferred in. I'm just thinking about trying to remember or have it documented for us. That's all, speaking out loud, kind of in agreement with what she says. But I understand what you're trying to do, get some of it taken care of, but if it's not going to be the end result, and it's going to make a lot more work for more transfers down the line, I don't know what the best answer is either.
I mean, I get that there's not bills that are on here, but I have a hard time approving a transfer of money into an account for more than what the negative balance is, because there's a bill coming, because I can't see it on a report. Do you know what I mean? It's just, it's just not the i's aren't dotted and the t's aren't crossed, it's just like with numbers, it's all got a balance. It's kind of how I look at it, and I don't know if anybody else has any input on this. I'm kind of okay if you're not paying the full deficit, but then you're going to have to go back and revisit all those accounts again. And find more money.
It's not like they're spending money, right? I mean, it's just, it's just a fun transfer, so I think worst case scenario, if we err on the side of transferring too much, it either ends up in the wrong account, or you end up having to move it back, so. I mean, there's a certain incentive on the part of Eric and Marina to get it right, otherwise it's going to engender more work for them. So, you know, I, I, I tend to think I'm okay with just having them, you know, make the judgment calls about moving it around, so.
I'm just worried about keeping track of everything, because now, once we start transferring money in and out, we need to keep records of that, so, because we're going to be revisiting this again, because we've got a lot more to do. And then some, some accounts we aren't satisfying, so we've got to find money somewhere else, so. As long as we can keep track of it.
Well, I mean, ultimately, you guys are the board of finance, we'll, we'll take your lead on this. Um, if you want to put it off and try to do one master cleanup in August or September, you know, we can do that, but you know, you, you tell us what you want to do.
I guess this is much different than what we did last year, last year we did transfers a spreadsheet like this in June. And.
Right, but then we did more and odd, more when we convened, and then we finished it off in September.
Right, but, but no, but I don't remember any transfers coming to the board of finance after that.
Seems late, uh, it just in my.
I remember doing them in June, because I have the records, I keep, I keep the, you know, the meeting stuff on my computer, so I have the spreadsheet from last year of what we did.
And I was concerned about the workload of the department too, I mean, Marina can speak to that, if it's not a big deal to do multiple sessions, but I mean, I'm always concerned about the worker and, you know, inputting a new budget for the next fiscal year, and then getting things started for that while you're finishing the old, so. You know. I don't, I don't know the work, if it's not a big deal and it can get done multiple times and we get it started, rather than things not dragging out to August or September, I totally would be for that.
I'm just trying to make sense of, sense out of it, that's all, so I just kind of, you know, took that spreadsheet and I just added a column for what the current balance in the account was. And then I was just going down and trying to you know, and obviously, within a department transfer, it's easy, do you know what I mean? When we're going outside of department transfer, I just want to make sure that that department doesn't need that money. That's my only other question, I knew, Eric, you said, you told them they had to get back to you by June third.
You know, all the major ones, I either know what's been spent and what's likely to be spent. You know, certainly, I, I had a long conversation with the assessor about whether he felt it was safe for me to move out the money from his legal fees. You know, and we reassigned that money in a couple of different pools, because I know how much he asked for to cover the costs of the, the uh the books they have to buy um for the automobiles. So I mean, I have had those conversations with most of the departments. Did I miss one? I'm sure it probably did. But, you know, if we get to it, you know, we'll address it, and if at the last minute, the town clerk decides to go to a, uh, something that wasn't, you know, anticipated a couple of months ago, you know, we'll deal with it. I mean, remember, I did this first one now, most of these almost two months ago. Because these were meant to be done, you know, and presented to you a month ago. So, I mean, am I guaranteeing that nothing from this has changed? No, I, I can't. You know, I'm not guaranteeing that, but this will get the majority of the easy stuff addressed now. So we can, we can hone in on the things where we're still over later.
Okay, other questions or input on the budget transfers?
Diane, do you feel like it's cleaner if we wait until June? I'm fine with whatever, I, you know, I have to make the transfers, I have to make the transfers, but.
I, I'm just confused, because last year, we it was much cleaner, what we were transferring and moving money around was to satisfy a full deficit, so now this is partway. We're not satisfying the deficits, all accounts. And things like that, and then we're, you know, there's one account we're paying more into, because we know more bills, but before it was more here's what they're short, this is where we're taking the money from, you know, we're transferring it in, and here, and it was all it was one and done kind of thing, this is a multiple step process now. I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to do it that way.
Right, I, I think one of the differences is this budget is a lot closer to zero in the past. Um, how many line items are we over now? Already seventy or eighty line items? And we're going to be over more by the end of the year. So one, there's an awful lot more transfers to make. You know, and we're reaching down and taking small amounts from different budgets. Um, because, you know, we know we're going to be so close to even on the final budget. You know, before, we wouldn't, we weren't bothering to take twenty-five dollars out of an account. Um, we were, you know, because we were, most, most of them were bigger items. Now we're trying to take every dime from every place to shore up the budget, and I think that's part of the difference. Um, you're going to see just the quantity of transfers that we're going to need, given how much tighter we're budgeting to what we're spending. You know, you're going to see a lot more. Whether you see it in one shot, or whether you see it in multiple shots.
I'll leave it up to you guys, whether you want to do some now and some, or does it benefit, is there any benefit to waiting until June? One more, you know, so you, you already gave everybody the deadline by June third, so you've got to get a better handle on what's coming in. Is there any advantage to waiting till June to do this? Or not?
I think at this point, like Eric said, if we had voted on it a couple of months ago and they wanted to do it twice, that makes sense. But I'd be in favor of waiting, we're already at Memorial Day weekend, so there's one more month. But that's just me, I'll let the other members speak.
Like falls on your plate, I don't know.
I'm, I'm looking at, you know, when the last payroll is, when the last week I cut checks is, so in June, that will be the week of, twenty-seven is the meeting in June, the board of finance, so. I don't know, I mean, that would, we probably have a lot more settled by then, I would think, and then do another one after you know, the end of the year, it's, I don't know, whatever, whatever's easier for you, Eric, or for everyone else.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just talking about the workload on you guys and what you have to do. Is it easier to get more final numbers, or is this, you know, get May in here and just do it, or not?
Yeah, I'm in favor for whatever's most efficient for the department, I think they can manage this, I don't see a problem with it, so.
The one question I have is on line eighty-four. Uh, Capital Regional Council of Government, can you check that account number? I think that's wrong. I think it should be one hundred oh-eight eight nineteen, instead of eight seventeen, eight-ten? I looked at the expenditure report, uh, one hundred oh-eight-eight-nineteen-eight-ten is the Capital Regional Council of Government with a balance of one hundred and five dollars in it. So if you want to take ninety-six dollars from that, I'm just thinking, I just want to confirm that, that's a typo.
Hold on, I'm going to look, sorry, I had to get up.
I don't know why that shared stopped here.
All right, Diane, you said line.
Eight, eighty-four, line eighty-four on that spreadsheet?
Yeah, it was for oh-eight. Oh, yeah, it should be eight-one-nine, not.
Eight-one-nine, okay, that's a typo, okay, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right one, okay.
Eight, oh-eight-one-seven is for zoning. Yeah, so I might have just miscued that one, but.
All right, okay, that's fine. That's the only question I have.
So it seems that we could make a motion to accept these budget transfers, or we can pass and move on. Does anybody want to make that motion? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll wait to the next meeting. Uh, over expenditure requests, Eric, is anything tied with that in here?
Nope, I mean, uh, unless you have questions for me about specific over expenditures. Unless you have questions for me about specific over expenditures.
No, okay, hearing none. I guess we'll move on. Item seven is old business. We don't have any list topics listed under there. We don't have any discussion on the budget right now. We'll see what happens at the referendum. Actually, probably the budget should be under old business instead of new business, but new business on item eight is discuss and act upon the following and the proposed town budget. I don't know that we have any action to take here. Does anybody want to make any comments or input regarding the budget? Okay, hearing.
Done.
I was just gonna make one really small, small, small. I promise. Yeah, I just was impressed with the turnout last night. I thought there was more people. That came, I think it represented. You know, a cross section of Andover. You know, I'm glad that we respect everyone's opinion and. I'm not a big social media person. I've only joined it late in life. I know there was a couple of comments. That I'm not even going to bring up, but. For anyone that's listening out there, I really respect all the senior citizens that show up. Make their points made, get their voices heard. Power to you. I I just respect them, so I just want to give them the respect. Everyone else is respected in life too, but um. You know, to to come out to a meeting and and make a few points and everything, we've got to respect everyone's voice and opinion, so. Thank you. And yeah, it was well, well attended, so we'll see what happens.
Other comments or points? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item nine, the approval of the meeting minutes for Wednesday, April twenty seven. Twenty twenty two, this is item nine A. Everybody wants to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Make a motion.
Are you Diane?
Yep.
Okay, does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louise seconds, we have any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Move on to item nine B, which is Wednesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty two, special. Meeting budget workshop minutes. Do I want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. That was Louise making the motions. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Diane seconds, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, hearing none.
Sorry, Mark, who seconded that on my camera? I don't know what's up with my internet cutout.
I second.
Louise made the motion, Diane seconded. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you, we're good. Should recover there. Okay, we had in addition to the agenda items, we had nine C, which is the discussion, the meeting minutes for. Wednesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty two. So.
I know that I was the one that brought up the point before and. Just thought of it, it's just been a whirlwind of busyness. As you all know, we have a million meetings. My job is crazy busy right now, so. I really haven't had a moment to look at them and make some suggestions, and I apologize for that. Hard just keeping up with all we do. Can we table this to next month and then just, I mean, they're already posted. They're very, very. They just seem like there should be a little more information, so I was hoping. To kind of look at them, make a few edits or suggestions, and then get them back to whoever I need to, Eric or. The board clerk or you.
Well, getting back to Eric, I wasn't at that meeting, so I wouldn't be able to comment, and I would abstain from the vote because I wasn't there. So, yeah, I think if you want to add some edits or something, or make some suggested changes, you could. What I would suggest is that you write them up and distribute them to the board members and Eric in advance of the next meeting. And then we can vote whether to adopt those amendments.
Nothing major. I just know I'm the one that brought it up last time, and I just have not had a minute to even. So, thank you for letting me have another month to do that.
No, we're, we're fine. Not like we haven't had a lot of meetings, few meetings to go to. Okay, so it sounds like unless somebody else wants to take some action on that agenda item, we can. Pass that off to next month. Okay, hearing nothing, let's go ahead and move on to agenda item ten. This is our liaison reports. Do we have anything? Community center. Diane, if you have anything more, if you guys have matters, talk about that at all.
Thing, no, our meeting is always. Is next month. We didn't have one this month, so basically where we're at is. We're out trying to put together an RFP for the design bill phase. Once that RFP is done, we'll get it posted, get some quotes in, and then, and then go to CIP with that.
And speaking of CIP, CIP's meeting was canceled this month. So there's nothing to report.
Okay. Anything else? Joanne?
Just to add that I, you know, whenever they have meetings or need a representative from the board of finance, I'm going to be. You know, involved in that affordability, affordability, housing, study slash survey, whatever we need to do, so. I'll report back to it, but it is, if anyone has a chance to take a look at it, so interesting, so. Yeah, I mean, you have to have certain percentages in town and all that kind of thing, so. Based on what we currently have in Andover as far as the housing market and all that kind of thing. So, yeah, I'll be happy to report back to that if I'm involved or when things move along.
Good, yeah, it is on YouTube channel. I verified two when we were talking, so. All right, any other reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to eleven, which is board open discussion. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss before the board? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to agenda item twelve, which is public speak. Eric, you want to go the rounds?
Okay, the only person I see on here as a member of the public is Kimberly Person. So Kimberly, if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself.
And she's gone.
Okay. Unless I'm missing somebody, I believe that's it. CBC is just the recording. So, Nick, unless you have something you want to say. I think we're, we've checked that box.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to agenda item thirteen, which is adjournment. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will. I move to adjourn.
Okay, Rob moves to adjourn. We have a second. Joanne seconds, do you have any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote all in favor of adjournment. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Going once, going twice, any abstentions? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good week, get some rest. Let's hope everything rolls through this budget and will.